Everyone who gets the style, my word. You especially. First time in all my thirty-eight years of seeing it. It was nice. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. I didn't even ask for a wait. Thank you, I'm sorry, my apologies. Good evening. Tonight's Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The time is six-thirty-five. And we need to walk into the Council of East Conference Board. This meeting is being telecast live on the Wall Street Community Access Corporation, MACG. And it's being recorded for our future telecast. Is there anyone else in the chamber who is recording this meeting? You can say that by yourself.
James Burrows, nineteen-year-old.
Thank you, James. Would you please call the board.
Tony Bradley-Battle. George D. Docsey III. Karen Dunn.
President.
John D. Derrick.
President.
Kathleen Harris.
President.
Paula Gallas.
President.
Joseph J. Collins.
President.
Anthony LaBose.
President.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
President.
John D. McLaughlin.
President.
Adam J. O'Brien.
President.
Jonathan Townsend. Johnson Stanley.
President.
Charles T. Del.
President.
President McNamara.
President.
Twelve Presidents, three Housemen.
We have one more. We do want these right. And the clerk will decide this in council prayer.
Almighty God, we ask thy guidance in all my deliberations. Please join the council president in a setting of pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all please remain seated. While council adjourned, here's a moment of silence for our veterans.
I would ask for a moment of silence for all our troops serving all over the world and for those supporting them. We ask especially for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom.
Good evening, council adjourned. Would you all please be seated. Councilors, tonight's meeting is specially in the State Council, which I have called in accordance with the State Council Rule eighty-seven, as well as the Mass General Law chapter forty, section fifty-six. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing as well as a special State Council meeting. Before the council begins, it's deliberation on the matters on tonight's agenda. We will pay testimony from residents and other interested parties. Just so it's clear for the people who may be watching at home, in accordance with Rule eighty-seven, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, the special meeting will include a public hearing relative to classification and the residential factor, which shall be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of the tax real estate and personal property for the fiscal year upcoming in twenty-twenty-three. So... Is there anyone wishing to speak about any of the items on tonight's special meeting agenda? Would you please come forward, state your name and residential factors, plot a bracket, and sign below.
Could you please call me?
Councilor Donald, I'm sorry. Would you please call the council...
George D. Docsey III.
President. Thank you.
Jonathan Townsend.
President.
So is there anyone who wishes to be heard on any of the matters related to this specific special hearing? I see none. Thank you. We have a lot of public testimony. And so now I would like to invite the Chair of the Board of Assessors, Attorney Francis Craig, to provide testimony relative to classification and the residential factor, which will be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of the tax real estate and personal property for the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you very much, Justice Craig, for being here and your staff and our auditor. The City Auditor has advised me that the votes that are to be taken tonight must be taken in the specific order when that time comes. And we will be taking tonight's votes in the order that they are listed on our agenda when the time comes. So as of right now, would the clerk please call Council Bradley-Battle?
Tony Bradley-Battle.
President.
So, Michael. Full house. Thank you very much, Councilor. So, good evening, Attorney Craig. Welcome to this council. I'm very pleased you would come here. See if you can give a presentation to give us.
I do thank you, President, for inviting me here and giving me an opportunity to represent to the City Council great setting package that was put together by the Office of the Assessor. Representing Board of Assessors is the Chair. With me is Bernard Vasquez, also known as Tony. He was a member of the Board of Assessors. Next, we're seeing Casey, who will be voted by you to be another member from the Board of Assessors today this evening. Edgar Martinez is a new hire. We still have JP Morgan coming. He's done an excellent job for us already. He's been here long enough. And Patricia Flynn is our other member of the Office of Assessors. Turning to our packet, which we delivered to you last week. You'll see it's good news for the residents of the city this year that the average tax bill on the average single-family home is going to be expected to go down to be accepted always for the factor thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents from the average tax bill of last year. The figures are the levy at the two-hundred-and-fifteen million eight-hundred-and-four...
Excuse me, Justice Craig. Are you reading from a page that we could be looking at while we're reading?
Yes, it's labeled Page One. The only thing ahead of it is a couple letters that it says, and then a picture of the Dr. Rivers Bridge.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I don't know anything about that. Yeah, so again, I thought this already. Not that we are quite afraid by taxes. That being two-hundred-and-fifteen million eight-hundred-and-four-eight thousand eight-seventy-seven. Our number of parcels is fifteen thousand one hundred and one. Those are our residential parcels. We use that figure to figure out what the residential exemption will amount to in dollars. There's eleven thousand six hundred and twenty that are eligible using the thirty-five percent residential exemption rate that we've had since 2019. The dollar amount comes to three million twenty-six... I'm sorry. Three billion twenty-six million four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand four-eighty. That number comes off that residential valuation and we get a net after exemption of eight million two-hundred-and-ten-nine-seventy-seven to sixty-four. That normally would be sixty-five point two-nine, sixty-five point three percent of the levy. However, one of the votes that we have here tonight is whether or not to shift the levy. That is determination as to whether we have one significant tax rate for our residential and commercial parcels or if we have two tax rates, one for residential, one for commercial, as is permitted by the Mass General Law, fifty-nine five C. The shift permits the city to set the lowest residential factor, which we have up in the right-hand corner just next to the tax levy. It's essentially sixty percent, sixty-point-one-four-one-three. The lowest minimum residential factor is the number which grants these residents the lowest potential tax bill. The shifting allows for the commercial to carry up to a hundred and seventy-five percent of its proportional responsibility. You'll see in column six, CIP shift percent, which one-seventy-four-point-ninety-five-eight. That's the shift to the commercial of the levy. That gives us the minimum residential factor and is the lowest bill for the residents. Upon making that shift, the tax rate for residents would be ten dollars and thirty-two cents per thousand. The tax rate for the commercial property, industrial and personal property is twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Using those figures moving down to the bottom, a little back to the corner, we'll see that our average valuation for a single-family home in law then is six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand twenty-nine dollars. Removing from that residential exemption amount brings an average value net valuation of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand five-seventy-five. The tax rate of ten dollars and thirty-two cents, that's a tax bill of four thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars ninety-three cents for the average single-family home. That's, again, thirty-one dollars sixty-two cents less than it was last year. The second page is the list of options should the shift be anything other than one point seven-five, one point seventy-five percent shift. We've demonstrated the numbers between one-hundred-and-seventy-five and one-hundred-and-sixty-five. You see in the right-hand set of columns where it says tax rate, there's residence, residential estimated tax rate, and it'd be starting at ten dollars and thirty-two cents, which is the shift of one-hundred-and-seventy-five, going down to eleven dollars and twenty-three cents. Rate would be one-hundred-and-sixty-five. Move to page three. This is our average single-family home valuation. It shows you the history of the average single-home valuation for people like me that like in the pictures you'll see on page seven on the graph. These same numbers just put on a graph to show you sort of the increments of increase in the average single-family home value. You also see the history of residential exemption percentage. It was by law a twenty percent until 2017, at which time the City Council increased it five percent till 2019, where it went to thirty-five percent. You see our tax rates here as well. Those are also demonstrated on the graph a little bit further on the package. A break-even number is the number at which, if there were no residential exemption, you would pay the same tax bill as you do with the residential exemption. Important to note here is that of the fifteen thousand one hundred and one residential parcels, ninety-one percent are below the value of the break-even value, which means they benefit from the residential exemption being part of our tax cost. The nine percent that is not of those nine percent, I prepared a graph that, as you did last year, in follow-up from page ten, demonstrates the shift of that nine percent over the break-even where it shifts to. And if you take a look at where it said one-eleven, one-twelve, which are land use codes that we use. Those are the four-to-eight units and the above eight-unit complexes, department complexes. If you see the blue line, that shows you that the share of that shift has picked up by the apartment complexes about forty percent of that share. Residents, single families pick up approximately twenty-five percent. The balance of it is spread out amongst the other land use codes. So it was a shift to the multifamily. Page five. It's a demonstration of our changes in assessed values. It emanates from a sale that take place and from past years. This time requested that we keep them organized by neighborhood. Translated that to ward, as well as you can see your wards. You can see the houses. Number of homes that are sold in your ward is a percentage of the total number of homes in your ward that have the sale price of those homes and whatever assessed to sale ratio is. And you'll see pretty tight grouping of all the assessed to sale ratios. Lowest being ninety-one, highest being ninety-eight, where required by law to stay either between ninety to a hundred and ten percent of the average sale of properties, the single families. And that's why our assessment ratios are in that range. Some wards or neighborhoods, you'll see kind of small numbers of sales, so it makes it a little difficult for it to be a representative sample. When you see higher numbers of sales, which usually is a better pool of data to make our assessments from. But this is a report that we've provided in the past. The map just shows you where those neighborhoods are. Again, just graphing our average single-family value. And you see I was just later from 2015, where it was three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. Now, well, last year it was six-hundred-and-thirty-nine. And this year, we're at six-hundred-and-eighty-six. The average bill, really, it's not a large change. This year it was a hundred dollars of twenty-one twenty-two. And our bill is still up in this year of twenty-two to twenty-three. The next page just gives you a representation of the assessment relative to the sales price. And you can see how the assessments are going up following the sales price, but they're also bang and well below the average sale prices. But the clear explanation for assessments increasing is sales prices increasing. When you take a look at the chart on the bottom part of page eight, you see this comparison to other similar cities and towns. We call those cities and towns based on a number of factors that make them similar to wall families, such as the size of the levy, their reputation, their ratio of commercial and residential and so forth. These towns compare well to us. And you see how our percentage of assessed value relative to the tax bills are the lowest on the chart by far. And page nine is also an opportunity to compare Waltham to other similar towns. And you can see our single-family value increasing where just one, the record, where almost had six-hundred-and-fifty thousand on this chart. This is twenty-twenty-two numbers. And conversely, you see on our bill on the charts of on page nine, that we have a crash of forty-five hundred dollars as our average single-family bill. And that is much lower than all our other competing towns. Significant portion of that is our residential exemption. Many of these other towns can't do a residential exemption. They don't have the right mix of commercial and residential. Page ten, I referred to before. And our last page in the packet here is our list of top twenty-five tax payers. Well, that effort by Andy Casey has been put into this to compile not just each individual property, but make a determination of ownership. It's not always clear. They have lots of names of CEC corporations and so forth. But you recognize the value. Boston Properties has a billion dollars in assets in Waltham. They carry over ten percent of our levy. The next close is about half that with Hobbs Brooks. You know, they have over half, half a billion dollars in assets. They carry five, over five percent of the levy. And then Alexandria coming in. Third, Alexandria has been purchasing a lot of property in Waltham in the last couple of years. Silicon Valley, for example. It was anticipated that they're going to make a lot of changes at those addresses. That's their history. But they are really just beginning to invest in Waltham. So that's the presentation of the package. We've got a question to show.
Justice Craig, Assistant Craig, thank you very much. You're one of the very fellow nurses. I have a list going. I have the first person on my list in the council. Councilor Lawrence.
Oh, thank you, Al. Craig, thank you for the wonderful work as usual. You and your team, a great job. I guess, um, thank you. It's wonderful news that homeowners will see a reduction in their taxes going from this year to next year. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. It's unusual, as you see, the years are spelled out. Change over those years, so it's a pretty good year.
How often do taxes go down from one year to the next?
Last time was 2018, with twenty-one dollars. That's the only time it's gone down since 2011.
And so can you explain? I get the basics where the home value prices are up, so you pay a percentage of that to the city in taxes. So as home values go up, you're paying a percentage. Your percentage is paid to the city, so the city ends up incurring more tax dollars than income. Does it have? We had a lot of commercial property come on on the one-twenty-eight belt. How does that play into the deduction? Or is it just simply that the rise in the home values for commercial real estate? We're not changing. You're basically reducing the percentage for next year. Is that correct?
The rate, the tax rate? Yes, it's dropping. That's been true every year for the four, five years. It just drops. And it is because our values just keep going up. And I wouldn't say all the residential is going up significantly. The commercial values continue to go up. We are very fortunate in Waltham. Part of that increase in value is due to broad growth. All the construction, you see, in Waltham's being second. Second Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Third Avenue. Lots of increase of square footage of commercial building. It was sixty-five million dollars in commercial increase in value. That's new growth. That was represented by a million and a half dollars in tax dollars increase. But in addition to just the new growth, the existing pool of commercial property is increasing. A lot of it is because, the reason they're building in Waltham is because they have proximity to Cambridge, really. And Cambridge, Kendall Square balances out the East Coast with the West Coast as far as the D-plates for the life science industry. But they're up around ninety, a hundred dollars a square foot in rent, whereas Waltham's, well, like fifty to sixty dollars a square foot. The amenities are being added by the commercial ownership, like Boston Properties and Hobbs Brooks, to make it equivalent. And so we are fortunate. We grab growth and the values are existing. Commercial base is increasing.
We have a lot of construction happening at the moment for a lot of lab space and a lot of special permits coming in in the future. And will that continue to help even if there's a little dip in house prices? Will that continue to help our tax stabilization?
Yes, again, we're looking at next year. We have things that are already in the ground. You know, shovel it out, it's been in the ground and work is done. And Third Avenue in particular has two properties that will be coming on. At least one will be, I can see, probably very shortly, the next few months. The second building, one-e, it won't be done, I'm sure, every year. The calendar year twenty-three, I think, will be done. I'm sure we have that. And Fourth Avenue has two properties that have been developed. So we have that growth that's coming on. You're right that it will temper somewhat and that interest rates are picking up. Has dried up some of the venture capital. Which you see in the form of a lot of payoffs in the high-tech industry. So we anticipate that, you know, there will be some lagging in that area. But there's already going to be growth. Our commercial foundation is up to start.
It's up to be stable. I just have one more question, and it's based on the residential tax shift. We seem to do this dance every year when we're voting on this. Is the residential tax shift, it shifts over to commercial and the, obviously, the larger apartment buildings absorb a significant cost and the labs and all the commercial space. And ninety-one percent of the residential houses see a residential tax exemption. So it gives them a reduction. How come it's not all residential homeowners? How come the other ninety percent who pay the highest taxes do not get a residential exemption? Even if it's a condo that's above the median, the high-end home price, they will not get a tax exemption, correct?
Well, they still get the exemption, yes. Everybody gets it.
Everyone gets a tax exemption?
So long as you reside in the home, you get the residential exemption. The benefit isn't realized in relation to there being no residential exemption. So that's the difference with that nine percent we're talking about. The distinction that I need to draw was that the apartment complexes and multifamilies, they don't carry the burden of the shift to commercial. They stay on the residential side. So while the commercial is picking up tax bills twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, the residential is going to be ten dollars and thirty-two cents. Hey, how do you feel on that? This shift from the lower value... This shift from the lower value property under the even up to the higher values is a way of catching that up because there's opportunity at those levels for those entities to shelter taxes they take.
If I may just try to clarify, the, I understand, so the five-year multifamilies, they don't get the exemption because they're not owner occupied, is that correct?
Yes.
So why, why do nine percent get excluded? That's what I missed.
So they actually don't get excluded. They are receiving.
Thirty-five percent.
Sorry. They, so they, they receive, they receive the residential exemption, regardless of value of the home. What this break even is, is to inform as to where the residential exemption provides the benefit and then where it no longer is beneficial. If you have a value of property over the nine hundred seventy-six thousand, your tax bill would be less if there were no residential exemption. So it's not like they don't get. When you compare what their tax bill would be without it versus tax bill with it, they don't benefit. But the law will have here. Yeah, so a million three, the tax bill is nine hundred twenty-six dollars more per year than we're given on the shift. And again, you know, aside from that, the only nine percent of parcels that charted out during page ten was, just demonstrates how that, you know, where we're shifting our costs, the forty-eights and the eight plus. The one-on-ones carry over twenty-five percent of that. The distribution of those one-on-ones is throughout the city, on all the different points.
I understand, and I thank you and I'm glad the city is well. All homeowners, thank you that we're getting any tax credit issue, well, not tax credit, but a tax reduction. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. No more, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next one is Congress.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Craig, thank you very much. This is always a great meeting because it's to get officials looking at home, where the taxpayers, they get a better understanding of how this whole thing works. What they can't see is what you can, listen, I want to jump to page nine. We just focus on the average single family value by municipality. You know, Walden is almost at the top of that graph. And then when we jump down to the next visual we've given us as far as single family tax bills by municipality, we're at the bottom of the graph. And that says something for the management of the city. I also just want to make a quick comment about the influence that the commercial value of properties, commercial value properties and how that increase affects the taxes. We mentioned, I don't have it front, but Alexander Real Estate, I think it's number three in the city right now?
Yes.
And again, that's life sciences. That's their focus. They're spending more money, more time in Walden, which helps our taxpayers. And we're doing something right. We're drawing those businesses into the, into the city. And again, the importance of commercial development as far as the value of those commercial apartments. So again, thank you for the work that you've done on this with your team, and I would appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Council. Next one is Congress.
Thank you very much, Madam President, for your, Attorney Craig, thank you for your very thorough information of your map in here. Some questions, I want to follow up on the question that I'm on my left, which is regarding the page four, the break even point. We're looking at ninety-one percent that don't break even, a hundred percent that will break even last year. Were we at the same number, were they the same? I don't recall.
No, the break even number is going up. Last year, it's going to go up as the single family set value goes up. But last year, the break even number was eight hundred and ninety-five thousand was the point which your tax bill would have been back when we got there. So we're up, you know, seventy-one thousand higher. So.
So is the property value to go up and the break even point goes up as well?
It does, yeah. And last year, the number of parcels above the break even was one thousand four hundred and eighteen, now it's one thousand three ninety-seven. So there's a few more parcels that are below the break even that we went up last year.
Okay. The, and I think that doesn't work because we're looking at the property value going up, so is the break even point. You have a point of the more property, I guess, below the break even point, that's where you're being sent, where you're actually to save, correct?
Yes, and along those lines, the other thing that goes up is the residential exemption. So you have a combination of the break even number going up, the residential exemption increasing, so more of your house is exempt from tax dollars, and you have the tax rate going down. So in general, we're going in that direction, you know, to the residential tax bill.
Right, the fact that we've taken a tax breaks on our tax bill of, you know, thirty-one dollars and two cents, and that's going down, I think that's something that, you know, Walden Ham's ends up sure going to be okay with a half.
Yeah, I believe so.
I believe so, I believe it too. Now, I want to go back, the second part of my question that I have is on page eleven. Walton Pop is carrying ten point thirty-three percent of the tax level for the whole city, correct?
Yeah, the tax bill they take represents ten percent of.
So if you were to do Hobbs Brooks, which they carry over six percent, ten, so that means over, over fifteen, sixteen percent. Now, I don't recall, was last year, would they also carry that much, Walton Property you're involved?
Similar.
They're maybe low, under ten percent?
I believe Boston Properties is just above that ten percent, and Hobbs Brooks is just above five. So last year, Boston Properties was carrying nine point seven two percent, and Hobbs Brooks was carrying four point nine percent. So yeah, they were just under those numbers that they're at now. Two things, one is Hobbs Brooks has increased their buildings by significant amount, by two seventy-five one street itself, it's over a hundred million dollars, and obviously increased in that property by itself. Boston Properties similarly has in another shop. They, on Park Road, top, where it was Chris's, on the left-hand side, which you know, was by Boston Properties, Manchester Street, they own a number of properties that are always got foundations, they, they stay state of the art with their buildings. They, they're on West Street, huge, you know, fifty million sold renovation on two floors of building, like a tech company that wasn't bad for Walden. So, yes, they're always invested.
This is the first time I've seen it, and why it jumped out of either a, one single property owner, Boston Properties carries ten percent, over ten percent of the levy that's registered. And then went up from nine point seven to ten point three, that's, that's very interesting to at least.
Nationally, they're a huge entity, Boston Properties, but they, many of them, in Walden, they're standing there, original places, which they invest in.
Thank you. And last, the last page I'll reference is page hundred seven. Just as a person who was in the real estate industry, and I've been doing this for almost twenty years, seeing the, the average single family value going up. And that six hundred and ten thousand, that's just, it's amazing. It just, again, the pandemic did have an effect here, you can tell from twenty-one, I mean, just it going up, those thousand hours, even though you might hear from people saying the market is adjusting, so on, I think it's just weather and opportunity, but I don't think it's in any sort of a position to say that the market's crashing in any way. I think Walden, due to its low tax rate and every advantage that we offer, I think people do want to continue to move to Walden for that reason, and many others, I think, not just about taxes, but also whatever the city's offering to its community. I think people realize that Walden is very desirable among the old and even. That's why I'm going to be sure that, you know, people are watching, this is the reason why we live in a decent city, the people who want to come here, and therefore, there's a supply and demand scenario in this case, and that's the same thing.
The residential properties, they are definitely being elevated at a regular basis. Houses won't be turned over, they're achieved from nations. There's a lot of new significant ones that could start as well, because, you know, they own the value, and as you know, on the grid state market, maybe city on market, the law is that they still can save markets.
Right, the absorption rate is still up there, people still buying them. So, my comments, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome, Councilor. Council, next one is Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Attorney Assistant Craig. You mentioned a shift allowable by law to go through rat, two tax rates with a levy. By law, are you able to go through three tax rates?
The only two, the, the only two by statute are commercial, industrial, personal property, residential and open space is the other class.
So there's not a second commercial tax rate which, which is allowable by law?
No.
And I believe I asked you a couple of years ago, there's, there's a smaller tax rate, one tax rate for commercial. That's it, am I right?
Yes. The small business?
Yeah, the small business, yeah, yes.
So there was, there's a local option. Two different ways to approach small businesses. One was to allow exemptions for small businesses up to a certain dollar amount that really hasn't been adopted by very many of the municipalities because it requires that the value property be under a million dollars, that there be less than ten employees, and the benefit goes to the owner of the parcel as opposed to the small business that's occupied parcel. There's an alternative local option, you're meaning that the state has authorized it, that the city council has enacted, and that is to exempt small business personal property from taxation up to ten thousand dollars. That had a significant impact on our personal property tax, those who get over seventeen hundred thousand of the benefit if they were excluded because they're less than ten thousand dollars in that, it's a lot of very small businesses that own just smaller amounts of assets. Those would be excluded altogether from taxation.
Now, do both of those options have to be enacted by the city council, or is it just the second option there?
Both of them are local options, they need the city council to enact it.
And that would obviously, I would assume for twenty twenty-three tax rate, to lay out, that's something we would have to bring before this council in, say, May, and begin working on it with your office?
Yes, to allow to be effective in the first year twenty-four.
Madam President, being a special counsel, am I allowed to make requests? I can bring them later, I'm aware of it. It's, it's not going to make any difference, so it's no worries. Thank you for that. Now, with your, the work the Justice Office does for this, I know as, as a resident, have you seen a lot of property owners, commercial multifamilies, asking for reevaluations of their assessments as, you know, property values are rising and taxes are rising?
I can't say that I've had a lot of payment applications because a smaller, smaller owner, you know, handful that, that you get, and sometimes they are repeat people. And, you know, maybe what you may be familiar with when speaking to constituents are people that held property, multifamilies for a long time, have forty, fifty years. And, you know, they've been in the family, maybe haven't necessarily spent a lot of money on upkeep, and their value to a developer is much greater than what that owner has spent customers. So their rents generally are lower, they have to have to maintain the property. And so I'll hear from them about, you know, the tax rate affecting them because they've kept their rents low for a long time. But the problem is that, you know, the house owner will be bought by an elder for, you know, if they're over two families, they're four families, they use a million dollars, and, you know, those people that have held for a long time are most of those kind of values on their property, their four, six grand.
So with, with, do property owners, if you're hearing it from there, again, as they fill up their business, if my understanding, you know, they're filling, they're letting them know what they're charging rates, right? Do you see problems like this raising their rents to accompany these higher taxes that they're receiving?
I can't say that I see that, no. One, correct, is the smaller property owners don't necessarily have data. They don't always fill out the income expense forms that we send out. So that a lot of reporting that we get upfront, a larger, more sophisticated property owners that will provide the tax offices are capable of. But then there's some that, you know, wanting to know. And so in that case, we have to send based on the information that we get from our system.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Next one is, Congress.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Craig, thank you for the presentation. How often does your office reassess property throughout the city?
So we do it every year. There's only a requirement for the assessment, there'll be five of you, it's a certain case from the President. But in the interim years, we do these things that reevaluate the assessment here and re-certification here. And I just want to make sure you're not talking about, every property needs to be visited at least once within a ten-year period of time, those are the secret expectations.
For reevaluation, you do it every year, but every ten years is the revision to the physical property for complete evaluation?
Yes, and we would conduct those remotely, you know, subscribe to an aerial map, it's called an air map, that we report every three months, update the property, we measure it, and we see issues. And so we do a lot of that remotely, not having to physically, you know, outdoors and put that to the police.
And then the list of, you know, the top twenty tax payers, when these buildings are built by Boston Properties, Hobbs Brooks, once they're built, are we reassessing them as a city once they're outfitted with their tenants, or are we just doing a building only?
We're only committed to tax building only. During the development phase, we do a cost approach, essentially value based on money that's spent to get to the point that it's at. But once this goes to the block, you see it tentative, then it goes on the income expense approach, and they report to us what we give the rents, and deduct expenses, and use the capitalization rate that applies to the figure of the values. But a lot of times, the buildings will sell for twice what they have assessed for, and that's because they're buying long-term leases, they're buying a stream of income. And at twenty-two hundred Smith Street, for example, that I had assessed at about a hundred and thirty million, and it sold at three hundred and twenty. And it had just been tenanted by three great tenants that signed long-term leases, they were excellent tenants. So all street venture capital, what's it have, is a stream of income that they turn around and invest in. So when they see some that's going to be paying rent for twenty years at a normal amount, and it's going to be increased all the time because of the schedule of incremental increases as really desired. So the sale price on commercial property reflects a stream of income, not just building and land. We are only allowed to tax the building only.
On page seven, we have the Walden average tax bill by year. Twenty twenty-one, it was forty-three, twenty-four, twenty twenty-two is forty-four, twenty-four. So it was an increase. 2022 is 44.24, so it was an increase of $100 average per household. So based on your numbers, our taxes are going to drop by, I think you said, 30?
31 dollars.
31 dollars. So next year, that will reflect the number of 43.95.
43.91.
And then finally, we go back to that tax shift conversation all the time. Like the Counselor at large had said, it was 967. And we have 1387 above the 967,000, giving us approximately 13,500 below that number. But you bring this evaluation all the way down to $400,000. How many $400,000 houses are in Waltham?
How many? I can't say. We know that our average house is 686. So, I think maybe there are, I don't know, houses, they, the other issue is that the residential exemption applies to condominiums as well.
So that 400,000 could theoretically be a condominium, not a single tenant, right? So that goes into play with Waltham, yes. Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Counselor. Next, to Counselor Katz.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Craig, so this is really more informational for me, being the new guy. Just to confirm, we have two tax rates, commercial and residential. Do we have anything, though, for mixed use for commercial with residential on the second and the third floor? Or how does that work?
The mixed use will be categorized based on what is majority use is. So if it's over 50% residential, then it gets a split of, it's coded in as mixed use, mostly residential. But the tax bill gets calculated based on the percentage of square foot that is commercial and the square foot that is residential.
So it is, they would pay two rates?
They do.
The commercial, for the commercial side and the residential, the residential?
They get a split of square foot.
All right, thank you.
Under, uh, Counselor Dunn.
Thank you very much. So the residential exemption option was initiated back in 1979 by the Massachusetts State Legislature under Mass. General Law Chapter 59, Section 5C entitled "Property Tax Classification." And the name residential exemption is somewhat of a misnomer since the law is revenue neutral. The taxes still get paid, but disproportionately by owners of higher-valued homes, vacation homes, and rental homes. A more apt name for such a program would be plainly residential tax shift. Instead of a proportional tax rate of $7.34 per 1,000 over the entire assessed value, this residential exemption is a progressive tax rate, i.e. not proportional, of $10.32 per $1,000, over the first $260,000 of assessed value. For many years, Waltham was at 20%, which was the highest rate afforded by the state. But in 2016, after the Municipal Modernization Act, towns in the Commonwealth were then allowed to increase the residential exemption from a maximum of 20% to 35% for Class 1 residential properties. Hence, on this council, and many of us were there, the city increased to 20, to 25% in 2015, to 30% by 2016, and 35% by 2018. Now at 35%, Waltham is at the highest level allowed by state law, only matched by the city of Boston. To date, 15 municipalities in the state have this residential exemption there. Brant, Bonstable, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Antucket, Provincetown, Somerset, Somerville, Tisbury, Truro, Waltham, Watertown, and Welfleet. And our neighboring community of Lexington is now debating passing their own residential exemption. That's just an informational point. And I do have a question for Attorney Craig.
Can I just clarify one second?
Yes.
Just the 35% tax rate is Boston, Chelsea, Somerville, and Waltham. Cambridge is at 30%, Malden is at 30%. And you're right, there's 16 total, seven of those are complicated where they don't have as many residents, and they have people who own second homes, and therefore don't get their exemption.
Correct. And I think there are two towns in Martha's Vineyard that are also considering passing. The question I have for Attorney Craig, and I thank him and his team for all. We've got more information this year than any other years before, and I thank him for the charts and graphs and the spreadsheets. Is it possible, though, however, because I'm a ward counselor, is it possible to provide Page 5, the single-family average assessed by neighborhood instead by ward? Because I would like to know what the impact on a ward basis is. I have a hunch that the most impacted ward is Ward 1, but it could be Ward 3, and I don't have that data because the assessments are all done by neighborhood and not by ward.
You will have similar data from last year, and I recall that, of course, May, that new residence study, and I sent that out.
And I would be first to state that you were the first person in the department to provide that data last year.
Yes, and so that, you know, comparison was made. The date, the 30th last year, just dispersing that amount by a ward. So the distinction was that, while Ward 1 had 30% of the parcels that would be in that category, it only carried 21% of the burden. The next largest carry was 18% carried by Ward 9. What I looked at was the 112s, meaning the apartment complexes that located in each of those wards, because that will distort the amount of all the value carried because by far they carry the largest part of that shift. And there was 18 of those 112s in Ward 9. There was six of the 112s in Ward 1. 19, actually 31 of Ward 6. So if you'll, I can reset you up to the chart from last year, but it does show that the distribution of the burden of that, the 90% of the properties that we're talking about, when we look at Ward 1 carrying 20% of the 90%, you know, it's less than 3% of the overall tax. So similarly, it was spread out amongst the wards because all of the wards now have new single-family homes that's used pretty much anyplace, even condominiums. And they're selling for more than a break even, all over the city.
Correct. Thank you very much. Is that possible for you to provide that to the council that related to?
Sure, if I'll, if I can send you a copy of that sheet of chart.
But will it be updated for this?
Uh, yes, I think we can.
Great, thank you very much. And then, if a property is worth less than the minimum amount, which is, I believe, $260,000, do they pay no tax?
Uh, no, there's a minimum that
And how much is that?
Must pay 10% of the no tax, but you can't fall below. Nobody can pay zero, with the exception of full exemptions for veterans, particularly Golds Family, they pay zero. But anybody that has a property that has a low value to begin with, and then they get residential exemption, nobody pays less than 10% of the no tax.
Great. Thank you very much for all your information this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other houses with questions? So, thank you very much, Mr. Craig.
Thank you.
And for your team, all people coming in, it's a lot of work, and well, so thank you.
Thank you very much, President.
So the city office has advised me that the votes that we are to take tonight must be in age of the super board. We will take the vote in order that they are listed under agenda. So the first one.
Point of order. How many votes do we need for these votes? Is it a simple majority or a super majority?
I'm sorry?
On the votes that we're taking tonight, is it eight votes or 10 votes, literally?
Eight votes.
Thank you.
Well, so, um, Counselor Dunn.
Madam President, does anyone here have questions on the CPC voting? Is anyone here to speak to that, if there are any questions from the council?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, if there are questions from council on some of the Community Preservation Act funding, is anyone here to answer those questions this evening?
I don't see anyone from the CPC. So I have listed here that these motions will be due by U.S. Chair of Finance, they will do likely continue them.
I would share the finance. I'd like to make a move to approve the Community Preservation Act fiscal year 2023 surcharge allocation of $3,650,000.
You all understand this motion we wrote on that, so, point one?
On motion?
On the motion, Counselor, uh, look one.
Thank you. To the chairman, is that the total amount that is in CPC fund? Or do we know the total value of the CPC fund?
I do not have that answer, and I believe no one is present to see me to answer the questions on the funds that may be included in that.
Understood, thank you.
Point of information?
Point of information.
It says that it's the estimated surcharge in the amount of $3,650,000 for fiscal year 2023. So we'll be starting.
Right, yeah, we go through those data, and we get the counselor.
Three, okay, would you explain to the council?
His question was, what are the current funds available before we are voting on the surcharge? What is the CPC sitting on right now?
Their balance.
Their balance, yes, their current balance. That was the question I believe from the Counselor at large, to my left.
Perhaps the Counselor Arch may make a request.
Not on this matter right now. I'm in the middle of a vote, so I, the question. If you want to make a request, you can make a request afterwards, and I'm in the middle of a vote, we need to take these in order.
Trying to help them.
Thank you. So the clerk will call the roll on $3,650,000, please.
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
No.
Anthony LaFosse.
No.
Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant.
Yes.
Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley.
Yes.
Howard S. Down.
Yes.
Welcome. Welcome.
Okay, so by your action, you have approved the Community Preservation Act surcharge allocation of $3,650,000. Counselor Dunn.
Make a motion for the approval of the Community Preservation Act fiscal year 2020, it says 22, but it's 2023 state match allocation of $1,56,434. Just 22.
Just 22, sorry.
So you understand the sense of motion. On motion, we call to expire. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant.
Yes.
Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley.
Yes.
Howard S. Down.
Yes.
By your action, you approved the Community Preservation Act FY 2022 state match allocation of $1,56,434. Counselor Dunn, the third motion.
Make a motion to approve the Community Preservation Act fiscal year 2022 unallocated reserve allocation of $876,999.42.
And you all understand the sense of that motion we wrote on that for, please, please.
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin, that act, and Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant, yes. Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley, yes. Howard S. Down, yes, what do you think?
So by your action, you approve the Community Preservation Act FY 2022 unallocated reserve allocation at $876,999.22. Both motion, Counselor Dunn.
Make a motion to approve the appropriation from water retaining earnings of $2 million.
You all understand the sense of that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant.
Yes.
Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley.
Yes.
Howard S. Down.
Yes.
What do you think, Counselor?
By your action, you approve the appropriation from water retaining earnings, $2 million, towards next fiscal assessment. Number five, Counselor Dunn, please.
As the Chair of Finance, I move the approval of the fiscal year 2023 residential exemption percentage percentage of 35%.
Right, you all understand the sense of motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
No.
Anthony LaFosse.
No.
Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant.
Yes.
Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley. Howard S. Down.
Yes.
Thank you. By your action, you approve the FY 2023 residential exemption percentage of 35%. In the last, final motion, Counselor Dunn.
As the Chair of Finance, I move approval of the fiscal year 2023 residential factor of 60.1413.
You all understand the sense of that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Colleen Bradley-McGathlin.
Yes.
George D. Jackson III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
John K. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Paulus Katz.
Yes.
Joseph Yurkow.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. Blaine.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Patrick J. Bryant.
Yes.
Jonathan Pats.
Yes.
Thomas N. Stanley. Howard S. Down.
Yes.
What do you think, Counselor?
Thank you. By your action, you approve the FY 2023 residential factor of 60.1413. Counselors, we accept the rate for next year by the Board of Law, and I will take a motion from Counselor McLaughlin to adjourn. All dependents?
Aye.
I see I sat a special meeting with the council, setting the residential rate factor at, it's determined at 7.4.